All right, so we'll go ahead and it's three minutes after seven, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Here.
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 So, the next item is the agenda. Approval of the agenda? Are there any comments or questions on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Yeah, you can do that.
I was just looking to see, because Jim's not here, I don't know if we're going to go through the rest of that.
Yeah, if you want to pull the planning director's report, you can remove it from the agenda, there won't be one.
I don't see it.
Oh, maybe we left it off.
Maybe he did it already.
That would be even better.
Okay, as presented.
We did, we left it off.
Second.
So, a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? So, the agenda passes. The next item on our agenda is public comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda. So, if you have any comments on items not on the agenda, this is the time, okay. So, we'll close that. And the next is the consent calendar. There are two items, one of them is recommended for continuance. Can I have a motion? Are there questions or concerns about the one that's still on? Or can we have a motion to approve the consent?
I make a motion to approve the two consent items, one which is recommended for continuance.
Second?
So, a motion and a second on consent, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So, that means if you're here for 2,300, Sir Francis Drake, that is approved, there's still a 10-day appeal period, so check with staff before proceeding. The other item, Sixth Bridge Court is, was recommended for continuance, it'll be on next month's agenda, I believe. All right, so we're on to public hearing items tonight. First item on the agenda, 70 Mirna Avenue, application 14-12.
All right. The proposed project encompasses the following: removal of 80 square feet of storage that's currently accessed from outside the building, construction of a 393-square-foot master bedroom, full bath and laundry closet, second-story addition with a 14-square-foot covered deck facing Ivy Lane, 15-square-foot expansion of the porch on the west side of the residence, and conversion of the second bedroom on the first floor to office space to construct the stairway connecting the two living levels. The project requires the approval of the following discretionary permits: a use permit because the site is only 3,651 square feet in size; the town code requires that any substandard parcel obtain a use permit from the planning commission prior to making any modifications or additions. There are many two-story homes found throughout the Deer Park area where the project site is located; residences on similar-sized parcels range in size from 1,331 square feet on a 2,376-square-foot site to a 1,816-square-foot structure on a 5,616-square-foot site. The proposed project will result in a 1,460-square-foot residence on the 3,651-square-foot site, which is in keeping with similar-sized homes and on similar-sized parcels in the neighborhood. It's also a 50% remodel, so it requires design review. The proposed design incorporates the craftsman-style house found throughout the area. It requires a combined-side setback variance. The proposed, a project will not encroach any further into the required setbacks than the existing house, and the addition complies with the setback regulations. It also requires a parking variance because the applicants are proposing to provide a second parking space in the side yard setback, and the town code indicates that you're not supposed to locate parking in a side yard, but you find that type of parking throughout the neighborhood, and this actually is not on a, it's not a sideline, it backs up against the neighbor's rear property line, so it doesn't have much of an impact. And so, we're recommending that you approve application 1412 based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
Thanks. So, there are questions for staff? Do you have any questions? I know that we've received a couple of comment letters, and it looks like you've addressed that in the, in the findings related to the storage shed, and I think just to go through the issues, the, with the proposed action, this would sort of exceed a right, bump right up against the floor area ratio limit for the square footage. So, it sounded like it was a staff recommendation to remove the shed, and I just want to make sure.
No, they actually were proposing to remove the shed, and the original submittal, they totally redesigned it. The original second story, it had a bay window that faced the neighbor at 74 Mirna and a, and a deck that faced the neighbor to the back, and they spun the house so that the deck faces out towards the street, and there are no windows on the 74 Mirna side. And both those neighbors were noticed, and I don't see them here to comment, so I'm assuming that they're satisfied.
Yeah, and I think that was-
If not, they have the right to appeal, but-
Yeah, and it sounded like they were comfortable with all the changes except the-
The one neighbor-
The thing about the shed, so that's what I was trying to figure out.
The one neighbor at 74 was concerned because the porch on the rear is being extended a little bit towards her property, but there's still, the closets for the bedroom are going to pop out, so there's only going to be a little window from that porch that faces out towards the fence, it's on the first floor. So, I didn't feel that it really was going to have a significant impact on her property.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Are we ready to have the applicant come up? All right, so the applicant wants to come and present. Any additional specifics or answer any questions we might have?
Rich Rushton from Rushton Chartak Architects. The staff report was very complete and comprehensive, I think it covered all of the issues that we encountered during the course of this design. Schimatics on the, on the wall here, but basically, the, we went through a negotiation with the neighbor and with staff, and attempted to satisfy all the code requirements as much as, as possible. And we ended up redesigning the whole upper floor in order to provide privacy for both the neighbors. And like Linda said, we turned the, the floor plan totally around so that now the deck is facing the street rather than the neighbor's, and windows are nonexistent on the neighbor's side and minimal on the west side. If you have any questions, I can answer them, and Jeff Morley, the owner, is also here who can answer questions.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Hi, I have a question regarding your site plan. Can you orient us a little bit? I, you know, I looked at the plans, but not with color.
Okay. This is the existing porch, and this roof actually, this is the lower roof. Okay, here's Ivy, here's Mirna. The lighter shade is the existing lower floor, the darker shade is the second-story addition. This existing porch now runs all the way and closes this area, which is red, and that's the portion of the roof and of the storage area that's being removed in order to comply with the FAR. Only concern that the neighbor had last was that this little section, she objected to taking it down because she thought that that would affect her privacy. Well, in reality, there's a six-foot fence that runs all the way along here, and this, this roof continues on through and covers up part of the vision closet from the master bedroom below. So, there's really very little, there's only about a three-foot section that's being, you know, fact removed that affects her privacy. And apparently, she's not here tonight, so I guess she may be satisfied.
Apologies for all the squeaking, we're trying to find a microphone that you could hold while you were talking, so more folks could hear. Okay, any other?
So, I just, just to clarify, the, the letter that was written on April 17th came after the redesign or before? I don't know if you've read the letter.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
The second letter came after the redesign, and she was still asking that the shed remain.
Right.
But if you look at the floor plans, the bedroom closets act kind of as the shed, you know, and there's not that much of an opening, and it's on the ground level with a, how tall is the fence there between your properties, isn't it?
It's actually a seven-foot fence.
Yeah, they, they got approval for a higher fence, so whether someone could really look over that fence into her yard, I think it's doubtful.
Okay.
There's also trees in that area that are, are creating a screen as well.
And she did know about the meeting, because I was emailing with her, so she was aware the meeting was tonight, and I told her I'd give her your, I'd give you guys her email message.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. So, bring it back to the commission. I just have one question for Ms. Neal, the, this was continued from last time, so they were working on this information, or this issue as they were going.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. They agreed to a continuance and met with the neighbors.
Great.
Should we open it?
Oh, thank you very much. I always have to have reminders here. So, yeah, we'll now open it to the public, so if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this proposal, just give your name and address.
Melan Machet, 55 Mirna. I was a little concerned about the parking issue, but I see they've taken care of that. And I only have really one concern, and it's, doesn't impact me, because I'm on the other side of the street, and, but it impacts people on that culvert. And I worry a lot about the culvert, because I've watched the houses on the culvert flood, and, not annually, but probably about every three years. And I, in other cities in Marin, when people want to get permits to remodel homes, they make them deal with the culvert that abuts their property and, and handle maybe enhancing it to protect the people downstream. And that particular area right there does get a lot of water, and particularly in Ivy Lane and the street. So, I don't know if, if that would be, you know, I just think that the city should consider dealing with that. I don't think there's anything in the flood control that will happen someday that addresses the issues in Deer Park. And so, I think the people in Deer Park need to handle that. So, I don't know if this particular house affects that, but it does back that culvert. So, and I'm, Jeff's a great neighbor, it's a beautiful house, and I'm sure it would be beautiful when it's enlarged, I have no problem with any of that, but I think that we should be aware in the future of how to deal with the water issues in that part of Marin, that part of the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else to speak to this? Okay, and we know we've, we've had letters submitted, and we've, we've reviewed those letters, so those are incorporated as we're discussing this.
I can address that creek setback issue. Right now, the town code only requires a setback from the main San Anselmo and Fairfax Creeks, but the general plan does require that that be increased and that the town look at revising their regulations with regards to construction around creeks and culverts like this, but unfortunately, it's not in place right now, so.
Yeah, and that, that would apply to setbacks. I think the other thing that affects runoff is lot coverage, and actually, this proposal is reducing the lot coverage. It's a small lot, but based on the staff report, it's well above what would normally be required, but what's being proposed actually is reducing the lot coverage, and everything that's being proposed is within the existing roof footprint. So, I think from that perspective, this project wouldn't be perceived as increasing any of the additional, any runoff from the site, but that certainly is a consideration that is brought up, usually way up on the hills, that's, that's one of those issues. So, any other? So, nobody else from the public, so I think we've closed the public comment. So, we're bringing it back here for discussion.
I have a concern, not necessarily on this specific application, but in sort of the general nature of the cumulative effects of some of the variances and use permits being given, that a lot of the zoning that was taking place, these are very small lots with small homes being put on it, and as more and more variances and use permit requests come in, and the scale of the neighborhood is, is increasing, I worry about the sustainability in terms of parking issues and other impacts on the community. You know, one house is okay, two houses is okay, and now as five or 10 in the neighborhood are taking place, it's more just a general concern in how we want to address it here and sort of in future planning, but it is something that I'm concerned with, both the applications tonight.
We struggled with it before when we originally, we didn't used to have a floor-area ratio limitation, and it was kind of a struggle to come up with a floor-area ratio percentage, and I was kind of surprised that they went with .40, because it's pretty high. So, whether the town decides later to revisit it and decrease that, that may be something that happens. We're going to be redoing the whole, the whole zoning ordinance to get it into compliance with our general plan, and I'm sure that's, floor area ratio is probably something we're going to be looking at again, too, so.
Yeah, and it was explored, I don't know, five or six years ago, and one of the interesting things is the number of lots we have in town that are really tiny, to the point where it's pretty, I mean, the reality is, any app, anything proposed on the lot requires use permits and all of the rest, so the smaller the lot, the more constraints. But yeah, there's a couple of neighborhoods in town that have really tiny lots, and many of the other ones are not quite as constrained. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Colonel, okay.
Hi, I visited the property, and Jeff was gracious enough to take me around the back. So, I think, I'm, I think it's appropriate to remove that portion of the shed, and the deck is going to be set back away from where that is, and he also has, he's, he's got some camellias he has growing along that fence line that are young, but will grow. So, I think that there is a vegetative kind of barrier between as well. One thing, I don't happen to have the staff report in front, but I don't believe I saw any, what, in, in the conditions about parking, because the parking is limited, you know, for construction, like the-
Oh, like a condition about trying to carpool to the site or something, or?
That, yeah, they can make, try to find ways to encourage that, because there's limited parking in there.
You've added a-
There's no parking along Ivy in front of the, of the house.
Right. Yeah, you've added a condition like that before, that they try to park, have the workers, if there's multiple workers with multiple vehicles, try to carpool to the site.
Yeah, I believe, I think it was last month or the month before, I saw there was, we started, or I believe also it was maybe the other application later about the construction management, where you talk about how deliveries and parking will be handled, and I think that might be a good thing as part of the building permit application, just to have like a little written letter about how that will be addressed.
That came up on the Lansdale application a few months ago. We did come up with language, at least for that one, but, so it sounds like for, as a regular, as a regular item for any application.
I think it might be a good thing to start adding.
So, on this one, that's on page 10, and you could just add, there's prior to issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall submit a construction plan to the Public Works Department, which may include, but it's not limited to the following, and you could just add a bullet that they address worker parking or something like that.
I think you're attracting.
Okay. Any?
Is this, are we discussing condition four on page 10?
No, condition 3A.
Condition 3A.
So, should we say something like propose ways to minimize the impact on parking adjacent to the site?
So, I, I think, proposed means of minimizing parking impacts to neighborhood during construction. Is that, it's a little simplified, but I'm sure we can come up with better language for a standard. Okay, and then Commissioner Lamont, you had a comment?
I just, I just wanted to thank the applicants for making such an effort to keep the peace. It's, it's what keeps the community happy and tight, and I appreciate, I just want to put in the public record that it's appreciated that you've gone to the effort to minimize the impact on your neighbors, because it makes a big difference to everyone's lifestyle, so thank you. I was, I was going to add a condition that we put vegetation in, then I went out and saw the camellias, I thought, well, that's going to happen anyway, and there's a fence there, so it looks like you're already cognizant of that issue, and so that's my comment, I think it's a nice addition, and good luck with it.
Okay, any other?
Well, I have some, I just, off the top here, came up with this condition, perhaps "Construction workers shall use carpooling whenever possible, and contractors shall make their best efforts to minimize construct, obstructing the road with construction equipment", something like that. But it would be good to have a standard.
I see Linda writing it down and make sure-
I'm going to write it down, just the way you said it, but if you guys, if someone wants to work on it and propose something, they can just email it to me, and I will, you know, I can present it to you at the next meeting, and if you guys agree, we'll just make it a standard.
So, the fire department requires certain minimum widths for the street clearance, correct?
Right.
So, some of that is kind of automatically in place?
And if they're going-
And if they're going to block it, they have to contact police and fire, and they make sure it's not closed for more than a certain amount of time in any half-hour period. So, with the addition, because there is a condition that they, that the second parking place be put in place before-
Right.
-framing inspection, I think it was, so that helps a little bit with, with that. On a job we're doing right now, there's a stipulation from the town that says subcontractors with more than, you know, it's, each subcontractor is allowed one vehicle to the site, however you want to get your employees there is fine, but only one vehicle per sub is allowed at the site. So, there are certain ways through this so that everyone gets to the site, and there is access, you know, vehicle access and stuff. I don't know if we want to go to that length, because it's not this overwhelmingly huge project, but it's something we could think about.
Well, you know, I'm okay with, like, Mark, you know, deciding if it's appropriate or not, that's why I think it's, it's okay, you know, just to have, like, have it written down, and then Mark can decide if it, if it seems appropriate or not.
Okay, and Mark's pretty responsive. I don't know if you guys remember 40 Forest Terrace, but they had very limited parking up top where the construction was occurring, and Mark did have to go out several times, but they managed to get through that project and, without too much turmoil, so. And every situation's so unique, it might be better to let Mark review it, and he knows the area pretty well, so.
Just that things being what they are, unless language is in, unless language is in the permit, they're gonna, they're not going to see it.
Right, so we'll put that language in, and then they have to present a plan to the public, Mark is the Public Works Department right now, so it's the building official slash Public Works manager, and he'll be reviewing whatever they propose and make sure it's enough and adequate. He'll be getting the calls if it doesn't work, so.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that the proposal would be to add to 3A another bullet that says propose a plan to minimize parking impacts to neighborhood during construction activities.
Of construction workers and employees.
Yeah.
And equipment.
And then we can work further on more detailed language for a more standard approach, but I think this gets at it for this specific project. Were there any other comments? I do appreciate, and I echo the, the comments that a couple of folks have made, and I think it's really important that this was on the agenda last meeting. We appreciate that the applicants and, and concerned folks were able to step back, come up with a solution that works for most. I think we've done, I know the concerned citizen isn't here tonight, but we've done and looked at the concerns specific to the shed, and I feel comfortable with staff and commission really going out and looking at that and making sure that, we really did look at that question, and I think it's important that that's reflected in the notes, if you get any questions.
Yeah, and I'll make sure she knows what action was taken, so if she decides she needs to appeal, she'll have that opportunity.
So, given all that, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application as amended. That's application 14-1270 Mirna.
I second that.
So, you have a motion and a second to approve as amended, and that amendment is specific to 3A, adding that specific clause on parking. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, so the motion passes. There is a 10-day appeal period for the project, so check with staff before proceeding. Thank you very much. So, we will move on to item 456 Sinek, we have one in our group that has to recuse. Commissioner Lamont? So, with the rest of us, we'll proceed.
Okay, this project encompasses construction of a 400-square-foot living room addition to an existing 845-square-foot residence, resulting in a 1,245-square-foot home. The 400-square-foot addition and the 490 square feet that will be remodeled constitute a 50% remodel. The project requires a use permit because the project site is only 50 feet wide, and the code requires a minimum width of 60 feet. The proposed family room addition will comply with the required minimum and combined side setback and the front setback, and will not decrease the existing combined front and rear setback below the required 25 feet. There are similar-sized parcels in the immediate neighborhood with similar-sized homes, so the project will not change the character of the neighborhood or be out of scale with the site. The project does require setback variances because since it is a 50% remodel, the code requires that they bring the parking into compliance, which, and for this site, it requires three parking spaces, and one of the spaces needs to be covered, so they are proposing their carport and one of the parking spaces in the side yard setback. This is similar to parking that you find throughout the neighborhood. The project requires design review, and the design of the addition will include a pitched roof and numerous windows, which will improve the articulation of a structure that's currently lacking much variety in its external features. And so, based on its compliance with the design review regulations and the other sections of the code, staff is recommending that you approve application 1413 based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in the staff report.
All right, so are there any questions for staff?
I have one question, and that is, in the site plan, page 1.0, it appears there's three parking spots, and, and they, one of them appears to be behind the other, so is that, is that called articulated parking?
Oh, no. The code requires that you have at least two spaces that are side by side, but it does allow the third space to be in tandem, we call it tandem with the other space. So, the way they're laying it out, it complies with the number and the configuration for required parking, the exception is that they're putting the parking spaces right up to the side property line, and technically, if they were conforming, they would put, it would have to maintain a five-foot setback, which would put the parking right in the middle of their yard space.
And based upon the site plan in front of or behind a fire hydrant?
Oh.
Because there's a fire hydrant shown right at the curb cut.
Okay, I didn't even notice- I didn't even notice that.
If they were to move, if they were to move the parking over, then they would actually have to go around the.
Yeah, and what the commission has done in the past is these, this not, this not allowing parking in the side yard setback, I think it's because the houses are so close together and people warm their cars up, they didn't want cars right next to people's windows. But the problem is some of their lots are so small and like in this, this house is pushed right into the rear corner, so they really don't have much yard space. And if you push that parking in, further away from the property line, it really would be their whole front yard would be parking. And if you look at the neighbors right next door, they've got parking in the setback and a lot of the homes around there do, so.
And we have had other, other sites where there are much wider lots in terms of frontage along the road and there has been concern related to that.
Yeah, the only other option is to grant a parking variance and to decrease the number of parking spaces, which is just historically staff hasn't supported that and usually the commission doesn't approve it because, you know, you add, you make the, the house more livable, you're going to have more, more adults living there with more vehicles. And so there's always a trade-off, you know? Either provide the parking or you push the parking to the street, so.
Right. And apparently there's no indication why there's this ordinance regarding the side yard setbacks?
You know, it was adopted a long time ago and I don't, I've been through the minutes before because other people have questioned it, I've just never been able to find out, find a definitive reason for why they prohibited it. Because a lot of the older homes, that's the way the parking was done. It was done in the side yard setback.
Okay. I have an issue about tandem parking, but I won't go on with it. Thanks.
Go ahead.
I have a question. The parking space is nine by 19. Is that a Fairfax ordinance or is that a California code?
That's a Fairfax size requirement.
Okay. It seems that if you were able to cut it back, you would save the two feet.
Yeah, I think that's something we're also going to look at because our parking ordinance, our parking regulations are pretty antiquated and you don't really need, you don't need parking that large for a lot of vehicles, but unfortunately that's what's on the books right now.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. So we'll open it up to the applicant, come up and give us your background and then we might have questions.
My name is Robert Franco. I'm the project manager and one of the design team on this little project.
Blake Meyer.
So just a little bit about the project, what you're proposing, and then we may have some questions for you.
Okay. Front family room is essentially the structure and the additional parking.
All right.
Very small.
On a very small yard, very small lot. Any questions for the applicants?
Just, just one question. So currently the house has no sort of living room or family room?
It does, we're, she turned the current living room into one of the bedrooms and the smallest bedroom is going to be removed and become part of the kitchen.
I see.
It is two bedrooms now and it will be two bedrooms when we're done.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I wasn't quite sure exactly where the placement of the existing shed is in, I guess it's going to be, I guess it's going to be relocated because is it like in the, in, in the way of the addition? So I wasn't quite sure because it wasn't, I didn't see it on the plan where it is located now. So it, so it's in the setback?
It's in the setback.
So they were kind of, in order to make it conform to the regulations, okay.
Any other questions?
I do have a question, just for my clarification. I see that one of the bedrooms, at least on the plan, it looks like it's open, it doesn't have a door. And I don't know if that's just a graphic error. It looks like the sink is opening. Okay, so it is closed off, it does have a door?
Yes.
And the sink does not open up into the?
Does not.
Okay. Well, I think it's a really nice improvement.
Great.
You've done very well with a very small space.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so on the movement of the shed, moving it now closer to the front of the lot, is it going to tie in in terms of the color and materials to the existing house materials?
Exactly, yes. Absolutely.
All right. Do we have any more or do you want me to open it up, ready for open it up to the public? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll open it up to the public. Anybody who has comments on 56 Sinek? State your name and address. No one? Okay. So we will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the commission. Do you have any general comments or observations?
I don't, I don't have any issues. I think it's, I think it's a nice proposal. I think, I think it's a great little lot, so I support what they're proposing.
Yeah, I think it's a brilliant use of a small lot and will make a big improvement to your house.
I just, I echo the same. I think it's a great little project. It's going to improve things a lot.
And I'm not going to belabor it, but we, I, I also agree. I think this, the last two proposals we're seeing, it's interesting when you look at the zoning and the widths of these lots that were drawn long before the current zoning. So when you look at setbacks and all of the rest, it leaves very little space and appreciate the, the efforts that the applicants have gone to, to fit the proposed work inside that very little space. So I think that goes a long ways and anyone ready to make a motion?
Yeah. And I just want to add that I think it's appropriate for the, for the parking spaces to be right next to the, if we had a little bit of wiggle room, I hadn't noticed the thing with the fire hydrant, but that really is, I think we cannot move it all, so.
Not to mention the power pole on the other side.
Yes, yes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve application 1413 at 56 Sinek Road.
Second?
So you have an emotion and a second for application 14-13. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. So the motion to approve the work at 56 Sinek passes. There is a 10-day appeal period, so check with staff before proceeding. So thank you and if anyone sees Commissioner Lamont outside, let her know that she can come back in. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item, which is 3 Arrowwood Lane, application 14-14. Let's give a minute for Commissioner Lamont if she's.
It's kind of interesting because there actually was a planner in San Anselmo that quit because the town wrote its ordinances so that almost everything requires variances and exceptions to the code and he took umbrage to that. He said, "You really should be writing your ordinances so that things are legal," you know, "and really only unusual things require variances." Why Fairfax chose to do it this way? They just want everything to be reviewed, you know, because you could write your codes so that they're not so strict, you know?
Okay. I'm going to try emailing her. I don't know what we should do. Do we just want, does somebody want to go out and yell? Just so we, since we are moving along so efficiently, we should get her back. We want to keep the momentum, but we also don't need to let her wander too far. There she is. All right. She's on her way back in, so we'll be proceeding momentarily. And could one of you two turn the button off there just in case it messes up the sound? Thanks. Yeah, we were moving, we're moving it along tonight. All right. Now, now we're ready for the report on 3 Arrowwood Lane.
So Arrowwood is part of a subdivision that was the subject of a settlement agreement with the town of Fairfax and it's taken a lot of years to get to the point where the last lots are finally being developed. In the staff report, I put forth, you know, the requirements that were supposed to be met. The house is definitely in the approved house pad that the judge set, set out. It meets the height regulations. It's actually well below the height. They were allowed to go to 28 feet and the house is only going to be 19 feet. It provides the required parking. The, the ordinance, the settlement was a little bit vague about materials. It just said it was supposed to use materials and colors that, you know, blended with the hillside and everyone has a different opinion about what's blended. You've got the dry hillside during the summer, which is, you know, tan. You've got the dark greens during the winter, so that can be a little bit difficult. The landscaping has to go to the Marin Municipal Water District and what they've proposed using is acceptable. It's water, water conserving. The only thing I did have an, an issue with was the lighting because the applicant had proposed placing, the lighting is recessed under the eaves, but it's at four-foot intervals around the entire house, unless I read the plans wrong. And so there is the one requirement in the CCNRs that exterior and decorative lighting shall be, whenever possible, placed in a manner that the source of the light is not visible to adjacent portions of the project. And I know that the fixtures themselves are not going to be visible, but I just think lighting up the entire eve area of the house is, is going to be very visible. So that was the only thing that I took an exception to and I included a condition that the applicant worked with staff to minimize the lighting to that that's necessary to provide safety. And then that if we couldn't agree on what was minimum to provide safety, it would come back to you. And that would, so we're recommending approval, subject to the conditions. We're recommending that you adopt the attached resolution, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for approval.
And just to remind everybody, this is a design review.
Yes, only, thank you.
Only that the building, all of that is addressed through the settlement agreement and they still have to pull a building permit with the town and all of that.
Right.
But in terms of the envelope, the footprint, all of that is already.
Yeah, all of the lots, all the excavation and, and creation of the pads all occurred with the subdivision improvement. So normally if someone was coming in to grade this pad, now you would get a hill area residential development application and you are going to be getting one for one Arrowwood because they are not, they have to do additional grading to create their pad area. That one you are going to have a hill area residential development permit as well as design review, but the other lots, they're just design review.
Okay, so any other questions?
On page two. There's a construction, you know, construction access.
In the resolution? Are you looking at the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
The resolution.
Yes.
On page two.
Okay, so you want to?
Page two of the resolution.
Right. You'd like to add similar language?
Right. Just like we just did, I would like to add similar language. I don't, I'm not sure if we have a similar issue in this area, but.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate it because this road actually is maintained by the homeowners, so I think the more you can get the large equipment off the road, it can't hurt to put it in.
Right. That's what I think.
And you're opposite the elementary school, so.
Okay, and?
Oh, you know what? Since we're opposite an elementary school on that, we want to minimize dust as well. Is there anything in here?
There should be. Let me make sure.
Item six, page three, so four, yeah, item six. The roadway shall be kept free of dust, gravel and other construction materials by sweeping them daily if necessary. So that could be, so that's about the dust on the road. What you're talking about is dust in the air. And I think we really need to rely on staff based upon the settlement agreement, how much we can really modify this. So this is about the building permit, this section is about the construction process of the building permit and is that subject to our discussion or discretion?
Well, you know, the only time you've ever put like really strict conditions that they, that they put plastic around the construction area was for two homes that were basically nine feet apart. This house is, is, there's quite a bit of distance between the house and the neighboring homes and it's, it's pretty far from the, from the school. So I think, you know, if it, if it becomes a real problem with billowing dust, I'm sure we'll get calls and the building department can go out and try to give them some advice on how to keep, keep the dust down. But I think based on the size of the parcel and the location, it's okay to just leave the condition the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess what I'm hearing and I think it seems like there would be a way to do it is to minimize dust essentially. That's really, we're not prescribing how, we're just saying minimize dust. Airborne dust, and that would be, that's the concern that we're trying to address. I just want to make sure that given the settlement agreement and all of that, that, you know, I know that this resolution has a lot of language in there, a lot of it is our standard language.
You could just add a condition that says all attempts shall be made to minimize airborne dust during construction. You want to add that?
The concern is, you know, when you have an undeveloped property, there are, there are viruses that from mice and things like that that can come up with dust and, and go around and people could get, kids could get really sick from it.
Right. How about if we did a?
I think it's really important to note that that's in a very confined area, not in an open environment, so that's, it is a concern in confined, closed spaces.
We could, we could do a 6A and B. You could do a 6A that just says the roadway shall be kept free of dust, gravel, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And then 6B could be every effort shall be made to minimize airborne dust.
Yeah. And I think that's open and it addresses the concern.
That's fine.
But it's not prescriptive.
Okay. Or airborne material. How's that? Airborne material? Okay.
That's, that's great.
Okay. And just remind us the clause that you have that address the lighting. What number is that one? That was tied to review and approval?
There, maybe I just talked about it in the staff report. Let's see.
Yeah, I'm looking in the resolution because I think, I think it is important to have it in the resolution if we've got it in the staff report, so.
I might have left it out, so we should definitely add it.
So if that's the case, it sounds like it should go.
I think it could just go as condition 15.
As condition 15 or 14. Okay. So. So if that's the case, we would look at, if somebody can look at that language while we're discussing, we've only done internal, we need to ask the applicants up and things like that, so that's something for us to think about. But at this point, I think it's good just to bring the applicant out. Give us name, address and any comments, anything you've heard us talking about that you want to address.
Get on the block here. My name is Wayne Ferrari. I'm the designer, owner, builder, along with my wife Cynthia here. We have with us. We have with us Five Arrowood, Mr. Pugh, and Mr. Anderson. Four, I knew four, it's two times two. And this, since you're listening through the designer, I drew the plans. I'll give you a short version of my background. I'm in construction my entire life. I was a construction inspector for the Naval Engineering Command in Camp Pendleton. I've been up in the peninsula since 93, doing all construction, and a superintendent on $12 million jobs. I would like to take the issues that were discussed here, if I may. The LED lights were selected to be recessed and concealed, and they are switched so that only a few at a time turn on, and they are dimmable. Perhaps I scaled it wrong, but I did a mock-up at my current house, so my wife and I could see what works. And originally, I had them at six feet. They are now at eight and nine feet apart, and it had to do with me calling the manufacturer to make sure that there was a safe perimeter lighting. The property... Our property slopes up to a 40 to 45-degree angle up behind the house, and that darkness is a security concern for me. All of the lights, the LEDs on the brochure that I had turned in, are dimmable, and the lighting, when I went 10 feet apart, it created dark spots, which is a tripping hazard, and it's primarily for the patio areas and a real quick perimeter safety deal. It is not intended to be a Christmas tree. So, the brightness of those lights and that specific manufacturer is the only one that I've found that is dimmable, waterproof, and safe. So, that's the issue on the LEDs that I have installed. The exterior parking for access for equipment and material, based on the 9x19 dimension provided here, the property has space for five vehicles outside the oversized two-car garage. So, there's enough around that. The road access is privately owned. Arrowood is owned by all six properties, and all the owners are responsible from Oak Manor... Oak Manor? Linda, help me. Oak Manor.
Yes, Oak Manor.
I'm a new kid on the block. I don't know the area, but I love it. From there on up is built as part of the development, and we're responsible, so there's no concern about the damage and paying for it, because we own it anyhow, and so the city is never... Department of Public Works will never be impacted by repairs, and who's going to blame who? My current work here for the last five years on the peninsula has been remodeling schools. I am sensitive to it. The elementary school down there has pickup times, drop-off times, and pickup times. You're welcome to consider incorporating a time zone where no major deliveries can occur. There's... I don't know what the school hour is over there, and that is not a problem for logistics for my management of subcontractors. Though, that's on there. With respect to dust control, I am very actively involved with this subject matter every single OSHA, Cal OSHA, and the California Air Quality Control Board, located in Oregon in Oakland, covers all of California, up in the peninsula northern area here, and it's a law anyhow. So, whether you want to refer it to an agency, comply with the California Air Quality Control Board, or stipulate differently, I'm very conscious of it. We have the fire hydrant directly across the street from us, which is Two Arrowood, and I've already spoken to the Marin Water District about signing out a water meter specifically for dust control. The property is completely graded, completely graded. It's clear of weeds or everything. It doesn't have the infestation of a normal area that has been deteriorated for a long time. So, the pest environment, this property is completely flat within the building envelope, even though the property is over one and a half acres. The building envelope is quite generous on this one. It's 8,600 square feet. We have chosen to make a 2,700-foot house, single-story, and complying with the Superior Court documents of the property when it was developed, the height of 28 feet is minimized to 19, and the angle of the roof, the slope of the roof, is what I always call the Frank Lloyd Wright concept of blending the structure into the hillside. And the two houses that are currently on the property right now with a 6 and 12 slope roof are what I am putting in. And looking at the front house up through the hill, the roof slope itself will blend with the hillside, and there's over 400 trees on that property on the backside, so it's quite nice to look at. We did get contacted by Mr. Pugh, which is Five Arrowood, which is next above us. It's about 18 feet higher, and the question was, "How tall are we going to go?" The original house, before it fell out of something, I think, Linda, was 28 feet. It was two bedrooms stacked on top of a double-car garage, which was real close to Lot 5, and Lot 5 would not be happy. It would completely obstruct the view. I have done a engineered profile. I have a surveying background, and I took the second floor and the first floor, and looking straight out from the first floor, from Five Arrowood to respect it as well, clears the roof line straight out. Second floor can see anything at once, but the roof line at 19 feet on a 6 and 12 valley-type or hip roof completely clears it, so I'm hoping we have a neighbor that's going to be happy about that. We've shared designs together, and we're all excited about moving in there. So, the building envelope, the compaction and engineered fill that has already been done, so there's no grading. There's only... We will be drilling caissons to get down to a harder substance. We are putting a swimming pool on it, and it's very expensively engineered, and it'll be there. It's supported with the engineering data, so that will be structural review later on. So, we have that under consideration. The road is private, and we have pipe parking spots here, so... And then the color palettes were selected from the board that I made up, and I have those same samples up on the property right now to see how they agreed or disagreed with the type of vegetation that's up there. There's five different trees, basically three for sure, that are close to the property, and that the greens and the... It kind of looks gray, but the tile is a green-red, gray-brown, who knows what else, blend, and through the different sunlights in time of day, I had a different brown one that had variegated colors on it, but it turned out to be very bright when the sun was hitting it, and I don't want to buy my neighbor sunglasses. So, we've gone with this one here, and we found it very, very favorable to the sunlight and the surrounding lands. The lower... The lowest portion, which is the printed of the masonry, I don't have any physical samples. That board would be very heavy if I did, but it does mimic, and I'll find the exact manufacturer of the structural wall that's on there in front of Mr. Anderson's property, so that it has no contrasting color to collide with each other. So, I am going for that to blend in as well, and that's the areas that were discussed here. And if I have anything else, you have any questions for me, or what am I supposed to do from here?
Yep. Hold on. Hold on.
I don't know. This works.
So, yeah, at this point, we would open it up for questions from the commission to you. I'll just kick off, because I think you've addressed it, and I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page, that what Ms. Neal was talking about related to the lighting was to minimize to the extent necessary to provide the safety components. I think that's what you were addressing, and so...
And that was the distance, yeah. And actually, physically, I bought some of the units already that come out of Canada. And, yes, it was a distance thing, too, it created dark spots when I went any wider.
And I think what we were... So, I think, based on the design, it was at four-foot scaled, and I think...
And actually, now that I've heard the explanation that they are, that you condemn them, I'm not as concerned.
But I'm just wondering if there would be objection to a simple condition that's just saying, "Lighting shall be minimized as necessary to provide, you know, for safety purposes." I think the concern... The other concern is that if the design shows them every four feet, you're saying every eight to nine feet, which it sounds like that is workable.
The scale may have been listed differently on the plans that were there.
Yeah, I like your wording, and then if we get complaints, the building official can go out and work with you to dim them or do whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, they are eight to nine feet.
Are they? Did I scale it wrong?
They're scaled at eight... If they're scaled at eight to nine feet, then that seems consistent. I just didn't want to...
Yeah.
If they were tighter, which is what you'd raised, but if they are scaled that way...
Yeah, I originally had them closer, and then I did a mock-up at my residence where I'm at right now, and that was way, way too bright even for me, so...
They do... This house does back up against a hillside, where we have had issues with, you know, vandalism and homeless people. So, I'm not as concerned now that I hear that they can be dimmed, but it would be good if you could just include some language in case we get complaints. The building official would have the ability to go out and work with the applicant to make sure that it's minimized.
He can set the maximum limits.
Yeah.
If it needs to be consulted by a building official or not is fine with me.
I think we'll let you go with whatever you think you need, but then if we get complaints, we'll call you and we'll come out and work with you on it.
So, I just want to make sure... It sounds like we could add a condition that's really just putting it on the record if there's concerns later, but it's... But based upon the design and the scaling, it sounds like that's what your intent was, is to minimize for the safety purposes.
Very much so. I'm not looking for...
We'll put language that's consistent with that, just to make sure that, as Linda said, if there are complaints. And the other thing that I heard from you, and I'll just, since we're also talking about looking at resolutions, so it sounds like the Arrowood Lane itself is private, so any damages to the public roadways, so our... It seems like our resolution would address the public roadways, and we won't address Arrowood Lane at all.
Yes, this is normal trafficking, because we don't have any mass excavation. We don't have the 100,000-pound excavators that I run.
But it should stay in there, because we've had trucks back into fire hydrants. We've had all kinds of very strange things happen, so...
But that's what I'm trying to figure out on... So, it says, "Any damages to Arrowood Lane or other..." So, Arrowood Lane is not a public roadway.
Oh, take that... You can take that out. Just say the public road.
Exactly.
Well, although, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but the homeowners' association hasn't been created yet, or has it?
Well, they have been created, there was the design review, but there isn't currently one set up for them, there's two.
So, my concern is, they don't...
Okay.
How would you... If Arrowood did get damaged, Arrowood Lane, how would you deal with that unless we put some kind of language in?
How are you dealing with it with Six Arrowood currently being built right now?
They have the condition that says that they're subject to repairing anything... Any damage that they do to public roads or to Arrowood.
As a result of construction equipment and abnormal use, I absolutely agree. I would not want the other properties to participate in it, and I will take full responsibility.
Okay. So, we'll leave it in.
Identifying how it occurs on the public roads is...
Yeah, that gets tricky, but what they do is they usually go out with the Public Works Director, and, you know, we're pretty lenient with it, but he goes out, and they sometimes do a video, and they identify areas that might get damaged by construction vehicles. And then, you know, unless we can really prove it, or they own up to it, it can be difficult, but at least it's something in place in case, you know, there's damage to the sidewalk.
And I'm comfortable that's what was done for the other one.
Yeah, it's a standard condition that's on the other Arrowood lots, and they were on their lots when they built the houses, so it's not specific to your lot.
Okay. No worries.
And, you know, you could appeal... You know, if you feel you didn't do the damage, we'll work it out with you. It's not... You're not going to be held responsible for someone else's damage, if that's what your concern is.
Yeah, the video of the existing conditions is something I do on my job sites all the time.
Yeah.
We could take, you know, considering Barrett's comment, we could take out the word "other" in number nine.
Arrowood Lane or public roadway.
Yeah, that's right.
My point is, actually, if it's a private road, I don't know why staff would want to or need to get involved in resolving any potential dispute on Arrowood Lane. I'm not at all disputing the public roadway part.
You can take it out if you want. It's just because they don't really have a home... The homeowners' association hasn't been formed yet.
It's a favor that the town of Fairfax is doing to... For the homeowners' association.
And the reality is, the building official will be dragged into it.
All right.
You know, whether or not we have that condition. They'll be looking to the town to try to solve the damage issue.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question. I'm not quite sure if I understand where I see in your drawings on your title sheet. You list your plants, but I'm not sure... Is there a planting plan? Do you have a drawing where you show where these plants are being proposed?
Yes, in the 8x11s, on the back page, I amended. Ms. Neal requested that I put a planting schedule. I have taken the...
Yeah, he's done planting areas, so it's sheet L1 dot 02. Are you finding it, Laura?
No.
Okay.
That's why. It's about...
I amended, Ms. Neal, on the last page of the document that I was given here. It's Exhibit D, and as requested, I pulled out the Marin Water District book, which shows all the types of plants that are especially deer-resistant, as I witnessed five of them on the street while I was there the other day. And the height and diameter of the plants, are you with Exhibit D here that's on the page that I was handed here?
Okay, because I just... I was just questioning because...
What's the question, ma'am?
Well, because on the... The plants that are listed on the T1 sheet would seem like you would have a problem with deer, so I wanted to see, were you planning to put any fencing around the property? I don't... I just wanted to get that clarified.
Okay, yeah, the original T1. There's a T100 point one, which has been amended on this page here, which is the very last page that I've been giving on this package. It's separate of the 13x19s that you have. It was requested that I put out a spacing and a type, and the species botanical name that come exactly from the Marin Water District.
Okay, I see that. But were you proposing any fencing or anything on the property?
The fencing around the property is the pool, because the pool is required by safety code to do that. The upper retaining wall, structural storm wall on the west side, it currently exists, but not a perimeter containment one, because the plants selected here are considered deer-tolerant.
What material will the fence be, and what height are you proposing?
No, I don't think he's going to do a fence.
You said around the pool.
Around the pool is required by the minimum building code requirements, and I can't recite that height, I don't think. I don't think it's even over five feet for a pool. We want to keep it...
But now she's asking what it will be made of.
Oh, be made of? Selection of material has not been made.
But based on the orientation of the structure, the pool is sort of... It's not the front yard. It's back towards the hill or to the... It's to the west, right?
Looking at the front of the house, it's on the left side. It's on the south side.
So, it's on the southwest side. So, kind of opening up towards Lot 81.
To fall in with the terrain, it most likely would be a wood fence, because we will be having vegetation around it or shielding it, so that it's not just one big fence. That's the landscaping portion that we'll be getting consultation for the pool finishes and final... and final landscaping for that area. There's not intended to be any fortress, so the minimum height would be the most favorable, so it doesn't block our own view, looking down through the valley. And the pool fence laws can't be altered.
So the, the pool fence is one thing, and then you have vegetable gardens, which are definitely not deer resistant, so you're probably going to need to fence that too. And so it might be worth asking to, can we ask to see that when they get to that portion of the project? I don't want the fence around the vegetable garden to hold up a project, but it would probably be worth seeing as a designer review.
You could make it a condition that, and we wouldn't need to, to charge an additional fee, it can be made a condition that the, that the fencing material come before you for approval prior to erection of the fence around the pool or the vegetable gardens.
I would just have to experience what this area happens, and I know the deer thing is not so deer, so.
All right, any other questions? Okay, so we'll open it up to the public for any comments.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone from the public? So state name and address in three minutes.
Where's the clock? No, I just want to, no, but where's the clock, so I can see the three minutes? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Valerie O'Donnell. My address is seven Creek Road, Fairfax. I'm an architect and a construction project manager, and I have 25 years' experience in housing in Ireland, England, San Francisco, and New York. I consider this project is coming off the drawing board too soon. There are so many issues, the dust, the school, the fire hydrant, the lighting, the planting, the garage size, the color palette, the dimensions on the drawings and the fence. There are just so many issues, and I think to take the attitude of that if someone complains, the building inspector can be called out. I think our building inspector has better things to do. If the lighting isn't satisfactory, by the time the building inspector comes out, it will already be built. Are we going to require the applicant to tear down the lighting around the house? I don't think so. It's very hard for neighbors to complain to each other when they're right beside each other. But there are so many problems with this design and with this implementation. I recommend that you do not approve it, but that you have it continued, so that people can really review what's going on. For instance, if there's a color palette, the people, the public should be able to view the color palette. A lot of the things that you are discussing right now should be discussed by the public. There is a garage, I know that you said that the settlement is already in place, but the garage is the size of six large double bedrooms. If there is a pool, we should know if it's safe around the pool, particularly as it's in close proximity to a school. If there's a fire hydrant, we should know for sure that the fire hydrant is being safely protected during construction. There are kids coming in and out of school, there should be laid down in black and white. You should lay down what the hours are that is allowed for heavy equipment. The dust is an issue. Again, I think it is outrageous to say that we will wait until there's a complaint and then send somebody out. That's like saying we'll call the fire engines after the house is on fire. It's common practice in all municipalities that I have been involved with, whether it's San Francisco, New York, Dublin, or London in England, for dimensions to be on the drawings, so that the planning commission doesn't have to waste their time debating whether the lights are four foot apart or eight foot apart. If there's going to be a fence, that is very critical in that area, we should know what the fence looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
How you doing? Unfortunately, you'll probably be seeing more of me, because we're building a house on five Arrowood, and we'll, I'm sure, be here soon, a couple of months for our own design review. But generally, just wanted to publicly say that we're very good with the plan. We looked through all the, the documentation, and we have no problem with, with the house. We're appreciative that, that they were considerate of our view, which I think is an important component, because we're kind of tucked way back there, so, but generally, we're good with it.
And can, can you give us your name, just so we have it for the record? Maybe your address, but not your name.
David Pugh.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, my name is Bob Anderson. I currently live at number four Arrowood Lane. We were the first people to move in in the area, and so just want to be generally entirely supportive of what has gone on today. And just to address some of the things we said today, I think a lot of these problems, if there is a problem with the trucks or anything like that, or with any damage, I really anticipate that everything, this being a private road, is really going to be decided by the, the people up there. And I don't think the city really has too much to worry about. In my dealings with, with Wayne, he's, he's been fine. I think that he's lived up to his word about everything he said he was going to do, so I'm, I'm supportive of everything. I, I was late to the meeting today, and I didn't know what the issue was you were discussing, if I can go back to that for a second, about, I think, parking or the construction equipment on the roads. The reason I bring it up is because the house at number six Arrowood Lane next door to me is being built right now, and the area in front of the lot is, is very constrained. And so whenever they, and they, they want to have their trucks as clear, as close as they can to the building site, so they don't have to walk all the way down to, you know, some other area and get their tools. And so I, I let them double park in front of my property all the time, and all day, every day, and I have no problem with that. I think the, the problem might be that since all of the, the curbs are painted red, that was not a condition of the approval of the subdivision. And so I would like to say that in order to allow more room for Wayne and any workers there, and it's a problem when you have to have concrete trucks, or the unusual number of people coming by, I think they should be able to park in the street, as long as it's okay with, I don't know who, the, the fire department or something like that. This is an issue I want to see addressed up there later. There's, there's really no parking for casual guests and things like that, or if you have more than two other cars come to your property. And so it's a, it's a parking problem that I think becomes a bigger problem during construction. And I think, you know, perhaps if we could even work with, you know, town planning to have a little looser enforcement.
Well, how wide is the road?
Well, I, I think that in front of me, it's, it is very narrow, and then it might be a problem for getting trucks by, that's, getting fire trucks by.
Yeah, I think the red-
But that isn't the problem going up before you get to, to Duane's parcel.
Well, staff can look into that, and whether there's the ability to remove some of those red curbs, but I have a feeling that that might be the fire department that require them to be painted red. But if we can eliminate some, we'll see if we can eliminate some.
Okay, I can talk to you about that later.
Yeah.
I don't bring this up mostly because of Duane, but I think it would be helpful during construction not to have parking, well, people will tend to park wherever they can.
And I don't think-
And if you make it too hard, it, it makes it very hard to get some other cars by,
right.
People coming up to our house. I'm, having been, having done construction a lot in the past in my own life, I, I'm very sensitive to having enough room for people to park their cars where they're working there. I would like to, and so I'm not saying this in any way against the, the project. I think the, the project, when it's being built, could be even better for the neighbors up there, if there's a little more consideration for parking for the workers.
Okay.
But other than that, I'm, I'm supportive of the project, and, and have found it good to work with Wayne, because for instance, today, he was talking about, you know, cutting down broom and everything, and pointing out that I didn't have to cut down the broom, because it was already, the house was already built by the time I got there. But no, I'd like to work with him to cut down the broom, because it is a problem, it tends to overtake that area. So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your-
Thanks. All right, anyone else from the public? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission. I guess, and I'm going to ask it as a question to Ms. Neal, because it's kind of confusing me. I, I know we deal with development on private property all of the time. This is a subdivision with a road network that's specific to that subdivision, and it's not town property. I think it makes perfect sense that through fire codes, there may be limitations in terms of curb painting based on road width, et cetera, but it's not a town code, it's not a town issue, as far as I understand it. So that's what I'm trying to just kind of rationalize, sort of. I, I get that the fire department would say you can't-
Yeah, but it's a-
Park there because it's a 12, it's not 12 feet wide.
And it's police too, though. It's police and fire emergency access.
Okay, so it's tied to emergency access.
Right.
And so those were conditions that would have been put in and stipulated in the settlement agreement.
I'm going to have, I'm going to have to check, I don't know that it was in the settlement agreement, it may be part of the subdivision improvements. Excuse me, but you know, if, if there's an air, if there's areas of the road that are wide enough to allow parking, we can see about trying to eliminate-
We won't make you talk while you're choking.
Some of the red curbs. I'll take one of my cough drops.
Yeah, take, take another cough drop.
Usually those would be covered in the subdivision regulations at the time, or subdivision ordinances.
Yeah, and I guess that's why I'm a bit confused, because the subdivision is regulated by a, a, a superior court decision document.
But the, but the roadway emergency access is still, even on a private road, has to be subject of police and fire regulations, so.
Okay.
If I may, on this, on this parking issue, a lot, a lot of times when you have a, a planned development like this, there's, there's some area of road that's maybe purposely made wider, or turned into a small parking lot for guest parking, especially in condo developments, you see that, and townhouse developments. So that's, that's another way to go, perhaps.
I, I think that, you know, most of these homes have very, very large driveways. I think you could probably fit three cars in the garage, and then there's room for four or five vehicles in every driveway, so I understand if you had a large party or construction occurring, you would need additional street parking, but I don't think on a typical day after the houses are built, it's going to really be an issue.
But this application is for a design review.
Yeah, and I, I would really like to address the specific issue that was raised. This is, there aren't specific details in these designs, because we're not reviewing those specific details. We're, it's design review for how this looks, how it appears. And we can certainly share this around, that's not, wasn't the intent with this color palette. But the color palette is provided to the commission, and I think it's part of the board packet, or at least a representation of it is part of the board packet, and it is in the public, available at Town Hall.
And the road and the improvements were built, and were reviewed by the different agencies, and were finally signed off by the town engineer after a long, long time, so, but I'm sure that if there's something that's been put in place that's not necessary, we can eliminate it. But if it's required-
So, and this is the first time I've dealt with any of these applications that were tied to a court ordered stipulation, so just making sure we're not crossing the whatever lines were drawn long ago. But given some of the discussion that I've heard, I just was taking notes, and I'll just kind of put them out there for the commission, that the items that we've talked about are making six A, what, making six, six A, and then adding a six B, which is minimize airborne material, and I would say material and dust during construction. On condition nine of the resolution, any damages to Arrowood Lane or public roadways, so just strike other. I think that, following the language of the staff report, adding a condition 15, which is exterior lighting shall be minimized as necessary to meet safety needs in accordance with covenants, conditions, and restrictions from the subdivision agreement 3.03 F3, and that's, that's in your staff notes, that specific language, and I think we would maintain that in, in accordance with the covenants and conditions of the stipulated agreement. And then I'm hearing at least some discussion around an item 16, which was, which would be that proposed, design review for proposed fencing material be brought before the commission. Would we say prior to, at what point would be appropriate for that review?
I think just prior to erection of the fences.
Okay.
So like for the pool, it should be able to be prior to issuance of his building permit for the pool. The pool has another condition on it, that the town engineer review it, because it's reinforced fill there, and so he wants to take a close look at any kind of excavation that occurs on these sites. Yeah, just prior to putting the fence up.
Okay, so fencing material should be brought forward for design review prior to erection of specific fences.
Mm-hmm.
And that's reflecting that it wasn't available and presented at this, at this hearing. Are there any other items that folks have?
I have a few questions. I don't see anything addressing lighting in the CCNRs, so it says in compliance with that, but I don't see anything about lighting in there, so.
It's page, okay, it's attachment, Exhibit B.
Yeah.
Page four.
Oh, here, okay.
3.03 F3.
Got it, thank you.
All exterior and decorative lighting shall be, whenever possible, placed in a manner.
That's the language that's also in the staff report.
It, the staff report refers to the covenants and conditions F, or 3.03 F3.
Okay, great.
So it refers right to that clause, yeah.
Thank you. Also, in regard to the color palette, I know that people, it's a very subjective subject, you know, it's a, it's a very personal, does it fit in with the hillside, does it not? This site itself is on the hillside, that does turn brown in the face of it, but behind this house is dark forest. And I just have real concerns about another really light building. You look up there now, and trying to disregard all that fresh plywood, but looking up there now, there's white trim on some of those houses. Those houses pop off that hillside, and there's nothing going on there that helps it work with the natural look of that hillside. So I'm, I'm concerned about how light this color palette is. I'm, I'm not particularly enamored with the veneer stone that's on the walls there now. I think those are too light, so to match it kind of adds insult to injury, in my opinion. It's, I know it's all, design's a very difficult thing, but I would, I would request that we see a darker palette, because I think it's going to pop off that hillside like the other houses do. And I, I love the, the roof line that you did, I love that you've respected your uphill neighbor and tried to nestle it in there. I think you've used that building envelope really well. I just, I just have a hard time with this palette, because I think it's too light. So, and, and then it's, this, the top, clarify for me, the top material, the composite material that's on the top, what's that for? Is that trim or that roof?
What's the question?
This darkest one on the far right, what's that material for?
It's on the roof side.
Please.
If you, if it's more, it's concrete.
Not lightweight, but this is concrete, there are any colors. It's up on the property now. This is the fascia. This is concrete roof, yes. It's a very expensive roof. This is concrete tile with the colors that are there. This is the fascia, because the greens in here and the trees there are the proximity of the hillside, of the different colors of greens in the property. The trees are a lot brighter than these, a lot brighter. This is the main house.
Could you stand to the side, so we can see what you're talking about?
Oh, certainly, certainly. I can stand, oh, let me-
I'll hold it, I'll hold it.
So can I just stand up, so it's vertical?
I'll, I'll help. So it's how it went?
Yeah, so if you start it from the roof, this is a concrete tile. The slope, this is the fascia, right next, immediately next to the roof. And then when the eve rolls under, this is the main body of the house. And this is a lighter olive than the upper one, for a little more blend of the trim around doors and windows. a little more blend of the trim around doors and windows. Below that, in the front and the sides of the house, is the masonry, faux masonry or masonry, that is going to be as similar as possible to that wall. And whether it seems bright or not, a final sample could be submitted and reviewed. I don't have any guidelines of what colors are allowed or not allowed. It seems to be an opinion. Opinions do vary. So I, my only concern here on the masonry is that it isn't completely contrasting with what's up there, so that they both pop against each other. I like that wall quite a bit. It's real masonry. I'm considering that. But this is a three-foot-high section, which will pretty much go just the bottom of the windows and follow around, not around the backside, because hey, nobody sees it anyhow. So this is an architectural item. And it breaks up here. That way, the footage of the main body of the lighter tan, which is darker than the dirt and brown grass that are up there now, all of these are up on the concrete wall up there, if anybody wanted to take a second look, so you can see them. And that's what I've explained for the colors that have been selected here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to ask a question of, are you able to talk again?
I think I can.
All right. So in situations like this, what is the typical approach for if requesting a separate, a new palette, essentially?
Yeah.
Or how does that work?
In order to not hold up his building permit, you can just, you know, he can take a month or two to come back with his fences and his color palette and material palette.
Right.
And we'll make it a part of this application, so he won't need to pay another fee. He will need to, well, we have his label, so we can just run the labels. He'll have to provide some more self-adhesive stamps for the neighbors.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see that, and I would like to see the lighting plan scaled so that we really know how, how many lights, and I mean, if they're all on at full, we're not gonna have any control over whether they actually get dimmed or not. And I understand that you don't want it to look like a restaurant up there, so, and nobody does. I get that.
Well, on that, the CCNRs do say low wattage lights.
LED.
LED or low wattage, and they produce a lot of light these days. That's, this was written before the LEDs came on.
Before LED technology took off. So, I mean, there are sections, like along the back of the garage, which I would understand you want for security, but there's no doors, and we're stipulating it's for safety, but, you know, is it safety for actual travel in and out, or is it safety casting light so that intruders are easily seen? Or I guess I don't know. So I would like a little bit more information on the, the actual lighting layout. Maybe it's just the scale that's funky on this plan and that it actually scales. I'm not sure, but...
You had precisely scaled out at eight to nine feet, nine foot maximum. It's a quarter, so if it was measured on quarter, it would come to the four foot. It's always been at eight to nine foot maximum, and that's what allowed, that's what minimized dark spots between the lighting with respect to the entire perimeter being lit up. It is a completely security and safety issue for a nighttime walk. Never, why would I want to do wattage? The wattages are twelve and fifteen watts. That particular waterproof one is fifteen watts consumed, and it replaces a seventy watt, which is like a spot altitude, two to three hundred watts.
Okay.
These replace a seventy watt light, which is on the document from the manufacturer, and they consume fifteen watts to keep the energy up.
So just so, because you're not on a microphone, so the, what you were explaining is the scale was, from your perspective, eight to nine feet, that the, that the lighting that you've identified, the LED lighting, is a fifteen watt, twelve to fifteen watt light, as opposed to a seventy, seventy-five watt light to produce the same amount of light? So, okay.
Well, just for the record, seventy-five watts is approximately the wattage, the light output, the lumens is what we really need to know, because a headlight on a car is approximately seventy-five watts, equivalent light. Seventy-five watts is...
So, so I think we need to work with the information we have in front of us, and I don't want to have a lot of discussion into the audience if we want to bring him back to have a discussion at the microphone, so everybody can hear. That would be okay. But if, if the information that was provided isn't providing enough, is inadequate to answer the questions we have, we can bring him up. But I think it's good to look at, does the information presented, the A one oh four one, is that enough information? Do we have other questions that we want to ask? If we do, let's have him come up to the microphone.
Yeah, I mean, it shows the lumens per, per fixture here.
Yep.
I don't know if it compares to a headlight, but it's...
It's a lot.
It's a lot. So I think we have, you know, probably more information than we know how to take in, but...
Right, and we do have the condition about the lighting in here, so that when that happens, we will have review again, I suppose. Yeah, thank you.
Well, I think we're at the discussion phase, so I want to make sure that we represent and reflect the items that were brought up. I think the other item that was brought up, and I, well, you should know the hours at Manor. How about that? I'll put pressure on you for hours if we want to put a delivery time.
Yes, and I appreciate you offering that, because that's a really important thing that I probably wouldn't have noticed until the day I dropped my son off at that school and had to wait for the truck to turn left onto Arrowood. But the major drop-off times are between, you know, what's like ten after eight and quarter of nine. It's, it's a very small window of crush, really. I mean, ask anyone in that neighborhood, it's...
Late birds to nine fifteen.
What's that?
Late bird window.
Oh, late birds, right. So, you know, it's maybe eight fifteen to nine fifteen is a safe, no-delivery time. And then pickup time does vary, because there's aftercare there, but it's not, it's not a big rush for aftercare usually. So school, it's, Wednesdays are early release, so that would probably be a different time, would be, help me out here.
It's two thirty on Wednesdays for everybody.
Two ten, right?
Oh, two ten.
Two ten.
Two ten on Wednesdays. The other days of the week, most kids get out at three oh five, some get out at one fifty-five, some get out at two twenty.
So the afternoon pickup time is actually staggered, pretty, you know, kindergartners get out earlier, and then there's early release. So the, the crucial is the morning, and that's generally when deliveries take place anyway, right, in the morning? So I would say maybe that's the critical, eight fifteen to nine fifteen, critical, kind of clear time for deliveries.
Can you work around that? If they, if they make that a condition, can you work around that?
I'm very conscious of it. That's what I do on my job, so it's just very much, because we remodel schools all over town.
Okay. So eight fifteen, or do we want just eight to nine fifteen? I don't know. I drive by there at eight. It's pretty crap, pretty packed, but eight fifteen, if you guys are comfortable with that. Eight is, eight just seems like an...
Eight to nine thirty.
Eight to nine thirty. That's avoiding delivery. So I'm seeing on, and I'm, again, looking at the resolution. Look, well, I was looking at three D, all construction-related vehicle, including equipment delivery, cement trucks, and construction, shall be situated off the lane. So it seems like shall, or maybe we'll make an F, three F, during the construction process. We can use the same language, all construction-related vehicles, including equipment delivery, cement trucks, and construction materials. Equipment delivery and cement trucks shall not access the site between eight and nine thirty to avoid impacts to traffic associated with Manor School. Does that work?
That works.
Hopefully somebody wrote it down.
That works. That sounds good.
All right. And then the other issue that was raised was the color palette, and I don't know where everybody falls on that.
I'm really, I'm having a real difficulty reading the drawings and making sure that everything's documented correctly. I think it's, it's too open-ended, and it can't be verified during construction. It, it, it's too open-ended, like, especially like on the elevation sheet, there's nothing, none of the materials are listed on the drawing. We really only have that one little detail. Normally, you would, there would be notations on the drawings indicating where all the materials are. I'm not quite sure how the corners are finished. It's, it's a visible sight. I mean, I see it every day at the corner where I live at Bothing in the Lima. And I would really like to take the extra time to make sure that everything's documented, so there's not many misunderstandings later.
So from that perspective, and I'm gonna ask Ms. Neal again, for our purposes, again, there's a, this is a design review, and I know there's a lot on the building side. So I'm just trying to figure out, I know you're not listening yet, so, I'm just trying to figure out if all of these issues are coming up, and I think they're valid. It's just a matter of, again, this is a very unique situation.
If you have enough questions, it's, it's better to just continue the project and be very clear to the applicant what information you want back from him. Yeah, if you don't feel comfortable just taking action, you have the authority to continue it.
Okay. So from that perspective, it sounds like, or were you being shown parts of the design that would answer those questions, or would we be requesting a certain, certain, yeah, elevations with, with design features, or what would be the right?
Is part of the issue that the information is distributed on different sheets, and it's not the way you typically see it, where it's all, certain information is found on certain sheets?
Yeah, I think that's part of it. I mean, I would really like to have the elevation sheet A one point two with the materials listed and, you know, indicate on the actual drawing, arrows and notations where those materials are, are listed. And I'd like to also know how the corners are being finished. Are we using corner boards? Are we doing mitered corners?
Yeah, I think the issue is that we don't have a complete set of drawings. That is the issue.
Okay, thank you. We're not at the, we're having our discussion. So Commissioner Caroline, you're, you'd want more, the specific design features to be included in A one point two and A one point two one?
Yes, I mean, I think right now, it's, it's like too open-ended, and it makes it, would make it difficult for planning and building staff to verify that everything was constructed how we had approved it, because we don't have enough information, or it's not maybe documented correctly.
It's like dispersed throughout the, throughout numerous pages.
So it seems like, from what I'm hearing, there's fencing concerns and fencing materials. There's some other concern around the vegetable garden. There's lack of documentation from A one point two, A one point two one, in terms of materials. Sounds like we perhaps want another revision of the color palette. I agree with Commissioner LaMonte that, I think those colors work. I agree that I don't think they're as warm to the hillside as we could have it. And we hear that from members in our community a lot, that we want things to tie in with, with the hillside and with nature a little bit more. And so perhaps a continuance makes sense, so we can get more of those details at our next month's meeting.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that. I mean, the project overall is, is quite beautiful and good-looking, and, and it's, it's gonna be a wonderful thing. The color palette needs to be looked at from kind of a distance, not, not just, not just sort of up there with the trees and holding it up there, and the trees are just a few feet away. I think that there needs to be kind of a, perhaps a video or, anyway, certainly a panoramic kind of view, and see if this catches the eye more than it should, that type of thing.
Okay, and I'm, I'll do it one more time. So based on this specific land, what do you call it, the legal settlement, the design review is certainly appropriate. There's a timeline for construction, all of those things, so I just want to make sure that you're comfortable that we're, if there is a continuance, it doesn't, doesn't raise any other unanticipated flags for the town.
No.
Okay.
It's fine.
And I think we, I think a lot of the things we've discussed can be addressed and resolved rather quickly. It's not, not huge things. I think, so what's been articulated thus far, if we were to go there, is revisions or upgrades to at least the figures A one twenty and A one twenty-one, and any other, or really, those are the only two elevation sheets we would need for, to show the design features, that the fencing materials associated with the project would be included for design review, and that the applicant would revise or bring forward a revised color palette that's a bit darker to match the background hillside and forest area, or forested area that the project is planned for.
And in the CCNRs, section three point oh three F one has, all improvements shall be constructed, painted, and changed in compliance with the applicable zoning laws, building codes, subdivision restrictions, and other laws, ordinances, and regulations applicable. So you have that in there. And on the following page, item twelve, also talks about the material, the trim window should be compatible with the natural appearance of the home and surroundings. So that's already built into the CCNRs.
And so again, these, these comments are not on the actual structure, and, because I think we've all agree that you've made huge accommodations and, and design adjustments to match the hill slope and, and view shed and things like that. This is really just a reflection of what, what is it gonna look like when it's up there, and how is it gonna appear from down, down the hill, down the road, from farther away, sort of stepping back from that right-on-site perspective. So, so I think if that is the, where the board stands, or the commission stands, I mean, motion would be the next. I think we've articulated the concerns, if we do make a motion to continue, that we'd want to see addressed when it comes back.
I'd like to make a motion to continue application fourteen dash fourteen in order to review fencing types for pool and vegetable garden, to see revisions to sheets A one point two, one point two one, in regard to materials called out, and maybe finish details a bit more fleshed out. I would like clarification on A one zero four point one, exterior lighting, just to be sure that the scale is right. It says not to scale in one place, and then we have a scale bar, so we want that scaled properly. And a revised color palette, taking into consideration the dark forest behind the site, maybe even this palette at a darker hue would work. But, so that's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So the next step is the items continued. I think you can work with staff to come back as quickly as you'd like to get it rescheduled and address the, the items that have been raised as, just for clarification. So... So be sure and talk with staff and get the right materials available for public review, et cetera. Do you have any other?
No, we'll talk.
Yep. All right. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the minutes from the March 20th meeting. I'll just make one slight correction. Sorry, Joanne, that was, I think I was the chair and called the meeting to order, but everywhere else you had me as chair, just not the first, first line, but. I know, it's, the, it's gotta change the template a little bit. Any other comments? A darker hue. All right, are there any comments, other comments?
Yes, on page five, item number seven. I just wanted to clarify with, what I was trying to convey was the flood elevation in relation, I mean, the, it's called the BFV in relation to what the, the floor elevation was at the, at the residence. So I don't know if there's a way to expand what Joanne had written there in order to reflect.
The, the two-line, discuss ra, the raised residence.
Yeah, and what I meant was like the, the flood elevation in relation to the bottom floor. Yeah, that's okay. You could just say the, the, the flood elevation in relation to the, the, the lower finished floor. Yes, yes, thank you.
Any other comments?
Motion to approve minutes with the change to page five and one?
As amended.
As amended.
To have a motion and a second to approve March 20th minutes as amended. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None opposed. All right, so the minutes are complete. We're on to discussion items, and I know we don't have the planning director's report. I don't know that between the planning director and our absent commissioner, the rest of us have any additional items or comments on item seven.
I'll just put a plug in for you guys, getting your, you know, your prioritized list back to us 'cause we've only gotten a couple. So Jim's gonna continue to put this on the agenda until we deal with it.
Even from Hawaii sent it in, huh?
New Caledonia.
Oh, New Zealand, even better. Yeah, no, we were holding our breaths that he would come back. All right, and then it sounds like the, the same would be true for item eight. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I think what he wants to do is we're just gonna keep that one on to remind you that if, if you do think of something, to jot it down and make sure you get it into the record because we will be keeping a list so that when we do go update the zoning ordinance, we'll have a complete list of things we have to look at.
So I think from what we were talking about tonight, some of the things that came up that we might as well just have is, and I know there's, I mean, it's discussion around parking, but it's, it's parking setbacks, tandem parking, covered parking, all of those things seem to come up on a regular basis. And then I, the comment that you made was interesting that, you know, it's the 1970s or 80s that the town came up with zoning and that created, made probably half the lots in town non-conforming.
I'd say more than half.
I think with the general plan, it, it was talking about adjusting some of the zoning, but would looking at the zoning definitions. I, I could see having those setbacks, but then having some threshold, like a minimum threshold, so then it's sort of a, a second level. Because I think trying to apply the same thresholds for a five-acre lot.
There's all different ways that communities do it. You know, some communities have what's called a zoning administrator. So if you have a project that meets, you know, setbacks, it would just go to a zoning administrator. It wouldn't have to, and the neighbors would know about the zoning administrator's action, but it wouldn't be a big public hearing. The problem is we, most of our lots are so small that, that it's very rare for someone to actually be able to comply with everything. So.
And I think it's important.
Really a unique community.
We've had lots of discussions, and I think it's important to have those discussions in public. You know, if a lot's 50 feet wide, you know, you can't change that.
Right.
We can have the discussion as 15-foot setback. And the reason why we're giving the variance many times is 'cause, well, you can't just have 15 feet or 20-foot envelope for building.
So I think probably when they get to that point, they'll, probably Jim will give you examples of how different communities deal with situations like this, and you'll be able to pick which way you think is the best. I personally think the way it is now actually works because people come to a public hearing and you guys, you guys are able to be the mediators and work it out with the neighbors, and it's pretty effective. It's just onerous for the applicants. But it, it really serves its purpose, you know? You don't get someone, you know, tromping all over the rights of an adjacent neighbor. So it's been effective. It's just.
But part of it is just to have zoning ordinances that really match the goals of the community and what we're trying to serve. And if needs and uses of a community have changed so much, I just press that we need a zoning ordinance that really reflects that. What are the different neighborhoods? What are the different zoning levels? What are you trying to achieve with that? So it doesn't become onerous that people have to come through when it can be taken care of already in place.
But another thing that, that we haven't done, and now that we're looking at lots of 3,000 square foot lots, is we've got an R5 and an R6 and R 7.5, so that's square footage generally. You know, maybe we need an R3. And, and maybe that would help accommodate these tiny lots that, that are.
They may have done this knowingly because even in your neighborhoods that are, where you have similar-sized lots, there are, the lots are varied. You've got differing slopes. It's really hard. We don't have subdivisions where you've got, you know, you can have a really small lot next to a huge lot in Fairfax. It's just, it's really hard to apply a standard set of regulations that are gonna be fair to everybody because every lot is different. But it's really hard.
But I, but I think when we look at how the town's evolved and it's no longer weekend, escape cottages from the city, and it's year-round living.
Right.
We, we need codes to reflect that.
Right. And some of them wish it would stay, the little cottages, but it's a fine line between.
So at some point, we're gonna have really robust, exciting, interesting discussions.
And you know, when they tried to come up with a floor-area ratio, it was really difficult.
And I participated in sort of the, the next round of like, okay, what does it mean? And, you know, you get to a point where somebody by right couldn't have more than a 200-foot house, you know? And it's like, well, we have those lots in town. It's pretty amazing.
Well, in, in, in some communities, what we can do, what you do is if you have a district where you want to encourage development or change or improvement, then you can change the zoning for that district and make it more of a, across the, across the calendar permit process rather than this hearing process in, in some instances. So that's something to look at, too.
You have, you know, Miranda Oaks where the lots are larger and you, even that, even in that neighborhood, the lots are substandard and they have to come through you guys.
And I still show May 17th, we have our Town Center Element Workshop. Is that still happening? It's on our calendar?
Is that here in this building?
I don't know.
It's here in this building on May 17th, Saturday, May 17th, is the workshop.
You know more than I do.
Yeah, I, I will be in big trouble if I'm here. Tenth anniversary. We gotta, I've, yeah. Mother's Day, birthday, 10th anniversary. I'm, I won't be here.
I hope you're in Hawaii.
Is that okay?
You better be in Hawaii.
Fly there and back, that's all we can, okay. All right, so I think we wanna keep reminding ourselves to have these things that we wanna work on when we have the chance. All right, so I guess that leads us to adjournment. Oh, one more?
No, I just wanted to mention, and thank you, the, for the Town of Fairfax for making the Planning Commissioners Conference happening. It was very enriching. And I told Jim I would give a little bit of a report, just at least on the biggest takeaway that I got. And I, I don't know if you were there at the end when Tony Seba presented on disruptive technologies. And I think the biggest takeaway I got from that was that they're predicting, because of the technology and the way it's affecting the way we commute and transport, that we are looking at self-driving cars, electric vehicles by 2013, I'm sorry, 2030. So in 15 years, they're expecting gas vehicles to be obsolete. And how that affects, I think, us or planners, towns in general, is that roads will become more efficient and garages will become, well, I wouldn't say obsolete, but it would, it would make everything more efficient by like four times. So, because the roadways would not have to factor in human error. So basically, you'd be able to load up the roads four times more than they are now. So everything would be automated and electric. And so, and because of the mobile technology, ride-sharing would go up and garages or parking structures would become virtually obsolete. So they're saying that we only use our vehicles now about 90%, oh, I'm sorry, 10%. So 90% of the time, our vehicles are sitting and people are looking, you know, a lot of people are foregoing cars, especially the new generation. So how that affects planning or us as planners is that, you know, parking and roads are gonna become a lot more efficient. So that's good news. The bad news is that there's a lot of data collection already, and they're expecting that to go up quite a bit. So they're anticipating that each person will have about 1,000 sensors related or attached to one person collecting data on your patterns and your phone, everything. Everything you do will be tracked. So that will make for a more efficient society, but the thing is, yeah, our, our, our privacy is pretty much gone. It's, it's mostly gone now.
I would, I would hazard to guess that garages will still be used for storage more often than they're used for cars.
Well, hopefully they'll redesign them and build more schools or things like that.
Yeah, it was, it was an interesting presentation, and the person in charge of the Planning Commission Conference sent us a video of that speech, so I thought we could send it to all the other commissioners and.
That's right. Did, I guess you got it? I think we need to share that 'cause it's very interesting to watch.
But I agree. I think, I think the town for giving Shelley and Esther and I the opportunity to go.
Yes, it was very, very good. So thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Just an observation. I don't know if the town is, is trying to do more outreach to notice our meetings, but for the first time that I can recall, I got the email from Michelle, the town clerk, announcing the meeting. I don't know if it's 'cause I'm on the town council email list, but I thought that was, I thought that was a good thing.
They finally bothered to send our thing out to the town council list. That's good. So one more question is what's the timeline on all the PG&E work on Broadway? That's pretty intense. So that's just regular upgrades and improvements. It's no, no new special. That's pretty intense work. Yeah, I was wondering about the timeline of it for.
Anyone that's concerned, you know, I'm not public work, so you should really direct your questions to the Public Works Department, and you can go online. And if you get to the Public Works Department, there's a place to put in requests for repairs and questions.
I understand all that. And today I was with, I'm on a cane because I tripped on the pavement on Bolinas. I was with a woman who was in a walker, and we were in a car, and we were trying to turn around on Bolinas. So we went down the little road by roasters, and there was a big linen truck parked there. And we had gone quite a ways in, and we honked several times and he wouldn't move. And I went to the police department and reported, but they didn't have someone to send out for, you know, quite a while. So we had to back out into the street, into Bolinas, which was incredibly dangerous. And my point is that PG&E is doing all this work. I saw six guys there today. Five of them were, you know, standing around while one was digging a hole. And there is no attempt at safety there at all. And I just, I constantly come up against this in Fairfax where you have to report it in order to get anything done, whereas in fact, the way it's done in other municipalities is safety comes first.
Yep.
Safety comes first.
So I think what we, what we, I was asking about it out of curiosity. I've seen that there's a lot of regrading and things going on on the sidewalk there, too. So, but it, PG&E is responsible for that.
PG&E, and you have a one-person building public works department, so he can't be out there. He has other duties. He can't be out there watching it 24 hours, you know, whenever they're working. He has other stuff he has to do. Part of the charm of a small town is it's a small town, but you also have a limited staff.
Yeah, I agree. And I, I think it's great. I think the town is great. I've lived in a lot of different places. This is my first choice. But I'm, I'm really concerned about the level of safety around the town. And the other thing I'm concerned about, I don't know if this is the right place to address it, but is the bridge. You have a plastic barrier.
I know you didn't get here before. We had, we have public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah, I actually walked up and down the road several times trying to find, it's not very well signposted.
The bridge, the beams were delivered today. You're talking about the bridge that's been taken down?
Yeah, what I'm concerned about is not the bridge itself, but there's just plastic netting there. And if some kids, some teenagers were fooling at night, there are no lights there. You could easily just fall against it and fall into the gully.
They're not supposed to be in the park after dark.
I know they're not supposed to be in the park, but they're kids. And there's nothing to do in Fairfax, so they're going to be in the park.
The beams are delivered and.
It's an orange, it's an orange standard hazard fencing. I'll have the Public Works Director look at it again, but I think.
But Linda, there's no lighting there. There's no light in there. None.
What would you suggest that we run lights out there? I mean, no, I don't, the city doesn't have the budget for that. But I'll, I'll bring it to the Public Works Director's attention. If he thinks that some extra lighting needs to be placed out there, he'll find a way to do it.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, just to have him look at it. Yeah, thank you.
Can I say something about the sidewalks? It is an item on the general plan matrix. And so I don't know how the public is involved, but I don't know if there are committees that would welcome.
I don't think they've decided how. You know, we, like for our street paving, we have a company that goes out and assesses the, the damage to different streets or what kind of state of repair it's in, and then they prioritize the items that get addressed first because the town does not have the money to fix everything. And so it's just a reality that there's gonna be areas that aren't as well-lit as we might like. We put lighting in downtown, and we get complaints from the neighbors who live in their residences and don't want extra lighting. So there's always two sides to every issue, you know?
The other is that many of the sidewalks, I know downtown is a different situation, but up the roads a little bit, it's the, the property owner's responsibility. And so then you have these gaps. And it's like, well, why is there a gap there? It's, well, one, one person did some development and were required to build it, but the neighbor didn't, and so you have these. Eventually, the idea is they might all connect. It's, if everybody remodels.
Yeah, like in the downtown area, you'll notice, we don't replace the sidewalks. We just shave them down to try to keep them as level as we can because there's not enough money to replace everything.
All right. Well, it is 9:15, and we have adjournment on our agenda, if anybody wants to do that.
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks.